It is now time to call the ION council meeting to order and we all staff.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as you all know, the Mr. Timmerick had resigned the office and I am appointing Richard Vogel to his spot.
Mayor, did we just do that without a vote?
We don't need a vote.
So you're saying that it's a mayor's party without the council, is that correct?
That's correct.
So I'll read the minutes from the January 3rd council meeting. Mayor Warren called the regular meeting of the ION and Town Council to order at 7:00 PM with the following council members present: McNeil, Piccarelli, S. Shipley, and M. Shipley. Employee Cannon is present. The pledge of allegiance. The minutes of the December 20th meeting were read and approved as read. A motion was made by McNeil, seconded by Piccarelli, to approve payroll checks in the amount of $13,420.60. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by McNeil, seconded by S. Shipley, to approve accounts payable checks in the amount of $15,740.86. Motion passed unanimously. Warren asked the council if they wanted to appoint someone to fill the vacancy in council position two. There is discussion regarding the process to fill a vacancy. A motion was made by Piccarelli, seconded by McNeil, to table the discussion until the county's legal counsel can be consulted. M. Shipley and S. Shipley abstained from the vote. Motion passed. The council discussed the SMP. Piccarelli requested that the Department of Ecology come to a council meeting to answer questions regarding the SMP. The council was in consensus and Cannon will follow up. A motion was made by McNeil, seconded by Piccarelli, to table the SMP vote until the council has a chance to speak with the Department of Ecology. M. Shipley and S. Shipley abstained from the vote. Motion passed. Public comment period was open. Richard Vogel addressed the council to provide an update on the community outdoor athletic facilities fund grant. There is an applicant webinar scheduled for January 17th that someone may want to attend since he is no longer on the council. There were no further public comments. The meeting was adjourned at 7:30 PM.
Okay, any corrections? Minutes stand as read. Hey, I want to remind everybody, we follow loosely the Robert Schloss's order. We're always leading, you know, we're very respectful. The chair is in charge, in charge of timing and also to keep order when things move forward. Okay, so we're going to move on to do payroll. May I have a motion to approve payroll in the amount of $14,132.06?
So much.
I'll second.
M. Shipley, all in favor? And I didn't hear, did everybody say?
Were there any declines? All affirmative?
Remember, I can't hear, so you need to speak up. Okay, moving on to pay the bills. An amount of $35,782.41.
So moved? I'll second.
Was that M. Shipley or then? All in favor?
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Any other opposition? All other votes were affirmative?
Yes. Okay, so we are moving on now to correspondence. Letter from Innovate ION regarding nonprofit steps.
Yeah, so I sent the letter out to everyone, but I can certainly read it. So this is from Sonia with Innovate ION. So she said that we had paid a business to file for our nonprofit, thinking that we would avoid mistakes that way. We will, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, beginning. So I came in, but it happened to be your day off. Attached is our State of Washington charity registration. Upon receiving your inquiry, we double-checked our federal nonprofit status and discovered it hadn't been obtained as we thought. We had paid a business to file for our nonprofit, thinking we would avoid mistakes that way. We will be considering filing a complaint with the Better Business Bureau at our next board meeting as the company has stopped response to our inquiries. As a group, we're grateful to the town and especially Councilwoman Sharon Shipley for bringing this to our attention. As a fledgling nonprofit, we have been taken advantage of in this manner is especially harsh. But we have now applied not only for our nonprofit status, which we know will be approved, but also to add Innovate ION as our BDA. After pulling community, it became clear that the use of creative history sent the wrong message to the very population the nonprofit is meant to serve. Once this is all resolved, we look forward to resuming the conversation about upgrading the kitchen at the ION community center. So that was in response to, you know, questioning, you know, our ask for their nonprofit documentation.
So does anybody have anything to comment or ask on that subject?
Do they have to pay that?
It's not your time.
And then the other thing that just came in from Sonia today, she wanted to just be clear. In the December 20th council meeting, the Innovate ION VP happened to be here, you know, filming. She was freelancing for Innovate ION and she just wanted to make it very clear that those are two separate positions being held by the same person. So it's not, she's not acting as the Innovate ION VP while, you know, filming, just happens to be one person wearing multiple hats. She requested to update the minutes that have already been read and approved, which I don't think is feasible. But reading it in, you know, this way will be into these meeting minutes. So she wanted to bring it up.
Okay, does anybody have any council questions on that subject?
So are we able to go ahead and correct that record today?
Right, so my understanding from council is that we don't actually change the prior minutes that have already been read and approved, but there will be an entry in these minutes, you know, indicating that correction.
Okay, thank you.
Jeremy Sykes, Slid here, can you just go first?
Please.
Okay. So now we're moving on to the SMP, the Shoreline Master Plan. And Jeremy Sykes should be coming on here just then.
Jeremy, can you hear us?
I can hear you all loud and clear, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you see me?
No, I cannot see him. Can we see?
No, I'm trying to see.
Like, can I turn him so we can see him?
He has to be able to see the council, the council's got to read, yeah.
That's why we can't.
I'm not that much to look at, really. Mine might not be worth it. Well, I'm not sure how you would like me to proceed. I feel, it sounds like there were some questions that have popped up and I think I'm the right person to do my best at answering those questions. I don't really have a presentation or prepared remarks, I'm not really sure even what the questions are. But my name is Jeremy Sykes, I'm the Eastern Region Section Manager for the Shorelines Environmental Assistance Program within the Department of Ecology. I'm here in Spokane. I've been in this position since just April. Before that, I was the Senior Shorelines Planner for Eastern Washington for about 12, 13 years or so. That position has recently been backfilled by Megan Hayes, who I see just popped on. So she's relatively new in the role, she started in November, and I'm very happy to have her on board. She's going to be primarily. Did I hit my, I think I hit my space button.
Okay, you're right.
Sorry about that. So, yeah, so Megan will be, you know, primarily listening in here. What the concerns are, she will be the Shorelines Planner that sort of takes this whole package, the Ponderay County and the towns, over the finish line, right at the end of a really successful, about three-year project to make this happen. And we've just, we've just got to get it to the finish line. So I also see that Andy Hellston is on. Andy is your, I'm sure you well know, is your representative from Ponderay County Planning Department. He's going to have the most, I think familiarity with details of the Shoreline Master Program itself. I was involved in much of the, much of the authoring and reviewing it and the ecology will be approving it, but Andy's been with it from very beginning. So I'll just say, first off, I'm not a lawyer, but I do have law experience with this particular law, the Shoreline Management Act. And I've gone through the approval process of something like 50 of these Shoreline Master Programs, along with a number of appeals and things like that. So hopefully, I can help shed some light. Any questions that anybody has? And just so you know also, I really can't hear the audience very well. I can hear you all on the council very well, but I think the audience is very large.
Well, when it's time for them to talk, they'll have them come on closer one at a time. But the main reason why you're here is because we do have an interim agreement with the county to manage the Shoreline. And we have a newer council member who, he actually requested, because he wasn't here when all of this went about. And so he had some questions, so I'll let, turn it over to Mike Piccarelli and let him ask the questions he wanted to ask.
Actually, we're going to wait on that call for you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, because I've had some people.
Identify yourself.
My name's Corey McNeil, I'm position five on the council. One of the huge things that they are not happy about, that they told me about, the right of entry under this guideline, you don't have to have anything but a badge or some kind of ID that says you're with the ecology, you're with whoever, and you have no remedy for having to require a search warrant. That violates my Fourth Amendment, violates any of these people's Fourth Amendment. A way you have this written out, it says, "Whenever necessary to make a public inspection to enforce any provisions of this title, or whenever the shoreline administrator has reasonable cause to believe the violation of this title exists or is occurring on any property or within any building authorized county, city, or town, personnel may enter onto such property or within any building at any time to inspect the same or perform any duty imposed by this title, provided that before entering any dwelling in the area of the building not otherwise open, excuse me, not otherwise open to the public, proper credentials shall be presented." It doesn't say anything about a warrant, which is by law you're required to have by the Constitution. You cannot just enter anybody's property. And I've had five, six today brought that up to me and said, "We need to, that needs to be changed, or needs to be thrown out, or this whole thing is gone." They're telling me not to vote for this. Because that is their property, not yours, and you have no authority under the Constitution to enter said property and start searching around and doing things just because you have a little badge that says Department of Ecology, or Fishing Game, or the Town Marshal, or the Sheriff's Department. That's what it reads in this, in this little packet that I have. And it says, "If entry is refused, the county, city, or town shall have recourse to every remedy provided by law to secure entry."
Okay. Was there, okay, so as far, so I don't know what provision you're reading, what sort of part of the Shoreline Master Program that is.
It's under right of entry XX.92.060, according to your plan.
That's, so that's the Ponderay County's plan, it's going to be submitted to us for approval. It's where we give it to them, they're giving it to us. So I think, you know, I can't really speak specifically to this, you know, the right of entry questions, except to say that typically those go along with enforcement actions. Where we have, where really the county has reason to believe that there is some, you know, because of a, let's say, a complaint comes in. That, as far as I understand, and as far as I have seen this play out over the last decade and a half, is that, that's a knock on the door, but really that's a let that goes to someone that's saying, "We have, we understand that there may have been something that happens, can you give us more information?" But I've never seen a case where, where anyone has entered property. I also, I've never seen the language, is that specifically, which about, about requiring sort of credentials or any of that kind of stuff? That's not in the Shoreline Master, that's not in the Shoreline Management Act.
It's in your master plan.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's in your ma, this is out 154 pages of your Shoreline Master Program. That is on page 153.
Okay.
That is telling these people out here that they do not have any Fourth Amendment protection.
I'm not, I'm not sure how you would come to that sort of conclusion from that. What I, what I hear is that, you know, all that really does is provide administrators with the ability to follow up on things like complaints and enforcement actions and permit conditions.
There's even.
So that's a knock on the door, and people could say, "No", and the recourse would just be to go to letters and things like that. I mean, again, like I said, I'm not a lawyer, I can just say that I've been implementing these master programs for a long time. I've never seen that sort of language being used or employed. Again, I'm not really sure what sort of circumstance you're, like, concerned might have. That we would, there would be nothing illegal happening, or whatever, people come on and go look around and find something where, I, I'm just not sure. It looks like Andy has his hand up, and he may really be able to provide much clearer answer to that question.
Okay, Andy, can, do you have your mic on?
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Andy Hellston, Ponderay County, Senior Planner. So that language is, like Jeremy said, tied to the violations chapter. The county, I can't speak for other agencies, obviously, on their processes as far as violations are concerned. But in Ponderay County, if there is a concern, or somebody's doing work in a shoreline underbid or unknown, a call may go to the ecology, it may come to our office. We typically get an address, phone call if we can. If not, we do what's called a letter of inquiry, where we send the letter out to the landlord and say, "This is alleged to be happening at your site. Please contact us, let us know if that is true, because there's always two sides to every story." And then if it's not true, they weren't doing anything, that's usually pretty much the end of the story. If they weren't doing something they weren't supposed to, the shoreline, without permit, we ask them for voluntary compliance. That's how we handle all violations in the county, whether it's a building permit or Shoreline violation. And then from that point, you know, I would say 98% of landowners maybe just didn't know that a permit was required or needed. So we go through voluntary compliance with probably most of them. And then in the event that they should say, you know, we're not going to be complete aid with the county or agencies, then we have a second letter that goes out for notice of violation correction. And then if that one doesn't, then it goes a third letter, and then that's just letting them know it's been forwarded on to the prosecutor's attorney's office for whatever action they might take. So nobody from the county, community development, any of our offices are going onto anybody's property without first getting their approval, whether they have a permit or not.
Well, right here it's in black and white. Okay, you put this together. And I'm sorry, I got people out here that are angry, and rightfully so, because you're violating or setting up to violate the Fourth Amendment. Okay, another thing, nice thing about it, I've heard these stories before. "Oh, we aren't going to do anything, we have to do this, we have to do that." I grew up on the interreservation in Idaho. I've seen the promises that people make, but in writing when they set the rules, they leave a big opening that enables them to do whatever they want, and you can't do anything about it. So I'm, I'm going to tell you straight up, I'm voting no on this because it violates the Constitution, it violates these people's rights. And I'm sitting here, I'm seeing people nod their heads if, "Yes, let's do this." You can't make somebody sign away their rights.
I just have a question for you, you said that there's letters that are going to be sent out to these landowners, but I don't see that anywhere within the SMP where there's.
Right, here, it's all right.
But it also boils down into that right of entry. And so if we can remedy that, to get that, you know, to conform with the Fourth and Fifth Amendments of the Constitution, to make sure that people have that due process, then we can be informed with the SMP. But until we get that in writing, right, instead of just, well, most circumstances we don't, well, this already gives them the authority to do it, period. So if we can remedy that within the SMP, if they can have that discussion, that'd be great. If we can't, we just can't do it. Does that make sense?
So can I ask a question here? So this right of entry has to do with a violation, correct? After a violation, it's a term.
Supposed, no, it doesn't, it says any time to inspect.
But it's under violation.
Would there be a way, would there be, I'm so sorry, I was just thinking, would there be a way for me to take a look at the whole provision here? And I don't have the, I don't have the master program at my feet, so maybe someone could give me a field summary?
Page 153.
So here's what I'll say. The, the compliance of enforcement provisions of the SMP are controlled in, you know, in the RCW with 958140 and in 173272. It's, it is a, we have only civil authorization. So what would be happening is where we can't get voluntary compliance, there's a process laid out by where we would, we would issue an order, or actually we would issue a notice of compliance that itself is appealable. We would issue an order if that, we were able to get compliance under that, that itself is appealable. So there really, there really is quite a lot of due process that's kind of into the master program. This was, it was all reviewed, you know, by all the lawyers and all that kind of stuff. And so I'm not really, I can't say that I'm an expert on this stuff. I will say that the language that you're reading to me feels unfamiliar to me based on all of the Shoreline Master Programs that I've read. And I don't think it is something that would be required as a part of our approval of the Shoreline Master Program. It just happens to be the language that was put in there. So it isn't something that we are dictating cost of obedience for the Shoreline Master Program, it's just what's going to be given to us. And if a local jurisdiction wants to go beyond what, you know, beyond what the Shoreline Management Act sort of requires, then we're inclined to, unless it's against the policy of the Shoreline Management Act, we're inclined to approve it. So I don't really know what the process here, Andy, would be. I kind of wish that we could have had white gloves here to talk about this. But I think striking some of that language wouldn't bother me at all.
Yeah, no, I would find the document, like, well, and share my screen to see what we're looking at. I would disagree with what Jeremy said. I mean, a lot of that legalese and stuff that was in there as it relates to enforcement duty authority, right of entry, et cetera, and how those things progress through, you know, say there was a violation, then there's those steps, and then that, all that other stuff would be kind of that afterthought, so, yeah.
But you need probable cause to enter somebody's home, dwelling, or their automobile, you need probable cause.
No one would do that, no one would ever enter anywhere.
Do you have any costs while you're in the law nowadays and end up with court with millions of dollars in lawsuits?
Can you order your grant, Sandy? Can I, this is Richard Vogel, position two. It sounds like that we have very specific issues here that need to be addressed and that we're concerned. And unfortunately, you guys are not provided with a list of questions ahead of time, which probably would have been a very good thing for you. So maybe we could address any, you know, pertinent issues at this point to which maybe you could come back and readdress those either through a written document or something, or the next meeting. Because I don't think we're going to come to any answers with any of this right at this point.
Sure, I, you know, in this particular occasion, when it comes to these kind of enforcement provisions, I, I feel like I'm maybe not the right person to address it. I almost want to sort of send this up the flagpole to our assistant attorney in general and just get a sense of how that is addressed. You know, when all of these things were put together, they are viewed specifically for constitutionality. And so it makes me think that something, there's something that I'm not seeing in the way that this language is put together, or there's some nuance in this sort of law enforcement oriented language that I'm just, I'm not equipped to sort of deal with right now. Like I said, I'm completely open to making changes. I mean, my minimum standard is 17327. That's, that is the whack against which I'm comparing the outcome of these Shoreline Master Programs. So as long as it's meeting that sort of minimum standard, that's something that I would accept. What I don't know is how that fits into the other provisions of the Ponderay County, you know, comp plan or any of their other rules. And it could be the language that we're seeing, it just really has been borrowed from other texts in the Ponderay County, you know, comp plan or reg, use regs. I'm not really sure, but I'm happy to take more of it.
They might put in the debt regs, the voluntary.
Oh, they are, that's probably.
Yes. It's all the, yeah, it's all the enforcement stuff of should something run into violation status. And again, I'm not an attorney, so I'm not sure why that's written the way it is, but that's just the way, that's, since I've been.
Yeah, so I, I think the idea there was to just sort of align the provisions of the Shoreline Master Program with longstanding provisions that have been in place for a long, for a long time, and I, you know.
I don't understand.
I can't really say. I can't really say enforcement.
So then, you, you guys are agreeable with sitting down, working this out, and trying to figure out a good solution, maybe striking that language out completely, or at least admitting it to where it poses, uh, poses the constitutional restrictions?
That's my vote.
Sorry about that. Sorry, Mayor, what was that?
Um, you didn't identify yourself, yeah. So identifying you to him.
So is that something that we can go ahead and look, uh, schedule maybe out in the future and try to get that worked out? And you can talk to your people, and we can have a little more discussion here, and we can all be here, and then we can have a...
Sure. Yes, please do it. Someone can provide, you know, if you could provide, or tell us where in the shoreline master program exactly that lives, it sounds like, Andy, you have it sort of clocked. We can just, you know, take a look at that language in particular, and look at what sort of, you know, tinkering we can do that, that would make it more acceptable, as long as being the minimum standards for the shoreline master program, Management Act, which does, which really talks mostly about, you have sending letters and trying to get compliance, and then having a simple penalty if there's no compliance. There's really nothing in the master program about how we might access, you know, we, how there's access to the property or not, or, or anything like that, so, yeah.
This is my...
I am happy to work with you.
Yeah. Um, what I hear you saying is it would be very helpful to have like a list of questions that could be submitted to you guys, so you can research and look at all of it, and then be able to answer the questions to your...
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Yes, that would be helpful. Also, if you could please, um, state out what violations you feel that that language is infringing on to you?
Glad to.
Or what, what codes that is?
Okay.
With the questions, how helpful?
In page one hundred and fifty-three of your shoreline management program.
We already come, we're going to...
We'll do it.
Yeah, he wants it in writing.
Okay, we'll do that.
Not to tell him right now.
Well, so, so if, if we can kind of move, move past the, the, that particular issue, were there, are there other questions? Are, are there other areas of concern in the master program? Maybe I'll do better on the next, next question.
I, I have a...
We have a citizen. Yeah, we have a citizen, you're gonna have to come up here so we can...
Okay. So, my question is on shore stabilization, because we have a lot of...
Are you there by yourself?
Cecily Carlton. Um, we have a lot of, uh, erosion in this area due to the dams and that. I know that there's a lot of stipulations on protecting our land as far as erosion, and what we can and cannot put in, in the area to, to protect ourselves from erosion. Um, so my question is, is there anything, is there any leeway for us that are property owners, uh, that are in this area where we have drops of like forty feet in a day from the dam that cause erosions on our property? I mean, we're still under the same rule of not have, not being able to do anything to our property, but as, as you can tell with water, when water fluctuates that much, we're gonna have those issues.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, Andy, do you wanna speak to, would you wanna speak to the, um, to the shoreline stabilization sort of, uh, guidelines? We really did try to focus quite a bit on that particular topic for Pontcharlton, Pontcharlton River, the other than...
Yeah, no, I, I guess a little more detail as far as not being able to do something with the land, um...
Like not being able to put up concrete, sorry. Like not, like not being able to put up barriers, examples like concrete barriers to, to stop walls, things like that. I mean, the, having to plant a tree when you take a tree out, things like that are, are concerning, because, I mean, we have, where water is coming up and down, erosion is happening in this area, there's no, not seem to be a concern for that, but we as property owners have to come out and plant trees and spend our own money, and, I mean, it just seems like it's, money is being taken from us from this area, being used, taken out of our, out of our, um, our district, out of our, uh, out of our con, our county, and we pay the prices.
Um, so...
So like when Seattle's...
The goal of the shoreline, uh, master program is to protect the resource. Um, in two thousand, two thousand eight, we, uh, McGowan had a grant where they established the bank stabilization guidelines for box canyon reservoir, um, which outlined five techniques that landlords could implement.
Mm-huh.
Um, and they, of those five techniques, um, there's a permitting process that they would go through, um...
Which is at a cost.
Kind of review.
Which it is all at, which is all at a cost to the property owner, you know? So, I mean, for us, our, we, we end up where our land is being eroded away from the dam, you know, where, where they're taking money, they're making money from the dam, but yet we have to pay for everything, you know? So to, it's, it's a little bit frustrating. You know, you're saying we're, we're trying to preserve the shoreline, but it's counterintuitive when you let a dam drop forty feet in a day. So, I mean, to say that you're, I'm gonna say that you're protecting the area is a little bit...
Exactly.
You know? I mean, I don't know. I mean, it seems you're protecting the area as lo, from the, I mean, to me, it sounds like you're protecting the area as long as you don't, as long as you're not getting a lot of money from them, you know? So, like, you know, I, yes, I understand that Seattle City likes puts money into ecology and does stuff on the shoreline and does protect it, but at the end, we're still paying a hefty load in this area, because our, we're still paying taxes for the shore, we're still paying for the amount that we have, but yet our shorelines are being eroded, and we are, we have huge stipulations on what we can and cannot put in front to, to stop it, to protect it. And then everything is at a cost, everything, we have to pay for it. So it's another permit, it's another, you know, another cost to us, so where does it, where does it end?
Do any gentlemen want to answer that and give them a chance to?
I don't, I didn't answer the question. Andy, why, why don't you finish what you were saying earlier?
Well, yeah, no, I was gonna say, so as far as the dam is concerned, those are operating under federal license, so the county doesn't have any authority or say on how they fluctuate through those water levels. Um, you know, there, and there's a lot of variables to go into a shoreline, um, you know, if it's eroding or not, if, if the landlord, you know, felt that it was, um, maybe they cut down on vegetation, um, so, and I'm not saying that's the case in all of them, because there's, there's natural things that occur, where there's springs, um, that slough and that kind of thing, and I hear what you're saying, um, but that's, the dams and how they operate are different from what we're required to do under the SMP.
Yeah, but the, I mean, with the contractual obligations that they had through it, it comes through the county, and those are agreements that the county agreed on, I mean, through the dam. So, I mean, when they underwent their new contracts, what, it was, what, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand, somewhere around there, they under, they went under new contracts, and so it, it came through the county. I mean, the county had a, they could decide whether or not they renewed those contracts or not. So, I mean, it, it does go up hand in hand with the county.
And I'm not able to speak to that, that's, I was not part of those meetings or discussions.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't really know exactly how to respond to the question about the sort of interactions between the sort of dam operation and the county, who's benefiting financially, probably don't know any of that stuff. But what I can say is that the, the law is pretty clear, that it prefers, that bioengineering is a preferred alternative, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's shall in the law, it's been that way since two thousand and three, and it's been in the shoreline master program for a long time. Uh, with, there is, the Pontcharlton River is a unique situation, it, it does have this massive fluctuation in it, it has highly erodible sources with those stands and gravels that come out. It, you know, it's a reservoir that, um, is, has created its own sort of, um, geomorphology, and it's not stable. And, and so I, you know, I think we understand that. Unfortunately, when you're doing this sort of planning, you have to plan for what is here now, and not, you know, what we kind of wish there was. And, um, you know, this has been a eroding shoreline for decades and decades and decades.
Yeah.
Um, and it's, and it's, not only, not only is it an eroding shoreline, but it's also very, very steep in a lot of places, and, and, um, the sorts of, in some cases, there may just not be a way of stabilizing that, that shoreline. And, and I've been submitting many properties, and it really is heartbreaking, and I do understand where that's coming from. So, um, there, so in all cases, when it comes to shoreline stabilization, the preferences for bioengineering, which is where the, there is sort of rock and hard structure that's associated with it, but it is also relies on vegetation to hold a shoreline together. If you don't do that, you end up with concrete walls or bulkheads, you're really just translating that problem to your neighbor downstream or, or upstream, depending on where the sort of flows are.
Which...
And so that's, that is the sort of bigger concern, is that, um, is that whatever folks do to try to protect their property, we need to measure the, the visit first for someone else. And the way that you do that is through an engineer's sort of assessment of the situation. And so you, it, it is possible to get a bulkhead, it is possible to do some of these other grid wrap, uh, preventism and things like that.
Yes, and...
But it has the evidence for a lie, and, and that's just part of the law.
Um, we need to get the meeting moving on, we're off. You can add all your questions and stuff to the list of questions that are going in this one, we have ecology here.
This meeting is for the shoreline, isn't it?
It's not just for the shoreline, we have town business to conduct.
But this is why we invited ecology here, so we can ask them questions, right?
I mean, it was a minute of the comment, and you've been well over your three minutes.
Okay.
Uh, excuse me, Madam Mayor?
It's fine. I thought that the question was...
I mean, you guys were gonna blow it up last week without knowing anything.
And so we can get control back of the meeting?
This is ridiculous.
Okay.
Can I just say one more thing? Sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I mean, so, I know that it may not be, you know, very satisfying, but we really do have a lot of information on our website, that talks about shoreline stabilization, alternatives, um, the, the sort of underpinning rules and law that is going into how the shoreline master program is written to comply with those, those laws. So, I, I'm happy to, to share any of that, those, those links, or you can, you know, just do a Google search. Anyone can reach out to me also separately, um, and I, I really am happy to talk with you about, about this and see what, and thanks, so, I don't want you to feel this is the only chance you would have to, to speak about it.
Well, thank you very much.
I, so, I...
Madam Mayor, if I may, is there any way that we can get, we have the Department of Ecology, we need to get answers from the county as well, 'cause it seems like the Department of Ecology...
You do have county up here. Andy's from county.
So, but they're not even answering questions.
What they're, what they're saying is get the list of questions together and give them, so they can give you a educated response.
Yes, ma'am, so then can we go ahead and schedule a town hall where they can start fielding some of these questions from, from the public? And so there's a queue, and they not just a comment?
We can consider that, yes.
Let's, let's get to that.
All right, now we need to move on with reading.
Could I help just a moment with these guys?
Okay. Mike Schicklin would like to ask three questions.
Yeah, Mike Schicklin, position one. Andy, um, you and I talked a little bit about some, uh, garbage. And I'm wondering if I hold a picture up here, can you guys see this? Can you see that?
Is that the garbage dump by the river?
So, this is the view from our town park.
Yeah.
And it's, this garbage dump is about sixteen feet from the water. Uh, is that a concern for the Department of Ecology, uh, or the Shoreline Commission? I know, Andy, I saw you some pictures probably six months ago, and we talked a little bit about this, but it's, this is a picture that I took today, and I'm wondering if, if they have a permit for their garbage dump? I doubt it. But it seems like it's something that you guys would be concerned about.
I think the Department of...
Well, I'll, I'll think, yeah, I was gonna say, the, maybe others, and certainly we have this always management, uh, program within Department of Ecology, the sort of sister programs online. Um, I, I don't know the, uh, I don't know pretty much of anything about that, but when it comes to, you know, that, that is something, I don't know if that, you know, who owns that, or who's responsible party, but, you know, that could be approached as a, as a shoreline violation probably, but it would take quite a bit more investigation, I would suppose.
It's pretty, pretty easy to investigate, you just drive down to the park, you can see it.
Madam Mayor, so we're gonna go ahead and table this, uh, for more discussion later on, correct?
Which subject, garbage or the shore?
The, the SMP.
Well, we gotta figure out how we're gonna approach this, are we gonna invite them to a meeting?
Yes, ma'am, we, I, I'd like to have everybody, if possible, if they're willing to do that, have everybody come here in person. Uh, everybody that we need from the county, from the DOE, and we will forward you questions only from ourselves, but from people in our community as well. And so that way you can field, you can have time to research those questions and give us some really good answers. Does that sound all right?
I, I think so, I, you know, I will, I will say that, that this has been, this is the end of the three-year process, I understand that you're new, newer to this process, but it has opened to the public for comment multiple times, um, and it is, you know, it's, it is, it's difficult to sort of put a pause on the entire counties, including the other towns, shoreline master programs waiting sort of for, for our island to, to act.
With all due respect, they, they don't have a way for us, correct? I mean, we have our own, uh, local rule, is that not, is that not correct? Wouldn't it be better for us...
It's, it's the submission for approval that, that has been waiting on, on this.
Yeah, that's, they're submitting for the approval, and, no, we, we, we need to take this, Mr. Pinkerly? We need to take this to a vote first, and then if people vote that they want this to go further with more meetings, then we, first, we're gonna vote to see how many people want to go ahead and move forward with this. You're not the only council member.
I understand that, thank you.
So, is the rest of the council ready and willing to cast a vote on whether to move forward with approving the shoreline, uh, management? Because this, we're adopting, we have it in the local agreement, they enforce our shoreline. So, um, there's other council members here, would you guys would like, you guys like to put in your voice? Would you like to table this, or would you like to go on?
I think we need to table it, because we have people out here that want to ask questions and get answers. I have questions and I want answers as a member of the council. I am representing these people right here. We need to table this until we have an actual town meeting with everybody affected by this, where we can get some answers to the questions we have.
I believe there is a town hall meeting coming up at Medley or Medley Falls, I forget which one.
Medley Falls.
Medley Falls, can we join that meeting and save time and effort? And have questions answered then?
Is it a meeting or is it a...
It's a town hall.
I, I can say that if it's an evening meeting, I, I will not be able to come up, drive up to Medley Falls, try and start a gang, sorry, evening. But I'd be happy, I mean, if the time works out, I'd be happy to drive my things or, or whatever.
I thought we were putting on the motion to either table it or move forward. That, is that correct? So I knew that we table it. Do I have a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so this... Thank you, gentlemen, for coming to us, and we look forward to speaking with you in the future, and, uh, we'll make sure to have questions already given to you, so you're well-equipped to answer questions, then, um, we'll move on from here. So thank you for, um, being with us.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks for the time, folks, and, and like I said, anyone is welcome to pick up the phone and give me a call anytime, like, I'm happy to chat with anyone.
Good, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so moving on to the agenda, does Pontcharlton Sheriff's Department have somebody here to... somebody here to?
I'm here, but I, I don't have any.
Oh, you're not, okay. Yeah, Sheriff Lexi wasn't sure if you were or not. Okay, so Fire District Two.
Okay, so my name is Blake McCannron, Deputy Chief, Fire District Two. I've got your call totals for the month of January. The month of January for the county, uh, for Fire District Two, we have a hundred and eighty-seven calls for service. Hundred and seventy-eight of those are EMS. We had eight motor vehicle collisions and one fire we played rehab on. Uh, the town of Ione had a total of ten calls last month and they were EMS calls. In twenty twenty-three, you had a total of nine calls and they were all EMS. So we're about on track for the new year. Um, if you're curious, in two thousand and, uh, two thousand and twenty-three, December had a total of, uh, thirty-two calls for Fire District Two. And the variation in that is the expansion of EMS services all the way south to, uh, the city of Newport now for advanced life support. Any questions?
Actually, I wanted to elaborate since we have a little bit of time. Uh, Christopher Haines, Fire Chief of, uh, our pondering Fire District Two, uh, council, councillor, uh, administration, mayor. Uh, I want to thank all of you, uh, especially Mayor Warren in the last couple of years with, uh, working with us at the Fire District and, uh, working with, uh, with the fire station here in Ione. Uh, there was some discussion some time ago and I just, I, I wanted this to be the, like the planting the seed moment for a second with, with respect to the Fire District and Town Council. And that would be with respect to the fire building itself. Um, oh, the liability of the building. Here we are. Uh, you know, I'm sure you're gonna see your insurance premiums, uh, jump exponentially and they're gonna continue to do so because as you know, that building was built over decades and floors and probably not zoned very great and probably not permitted very great. And we graciously went into a, uh, agreement with you, uh, to facilitate and provide these services to the community. And I think it's been a very successful, uh, endeavor between the two entities. As my job operationally is providing public safety, the orders on the forefront, of course, is initially public safety and well-being of the community. Uh, I wanted to begin this conversation by saying that, uh, you have been very diligent about working with us and getting the building sustainable because if you hadn't actually filed that insurance claim, that building was only gonna last for about two or three more years and then we were gonna have to evacuate it. Uh, we, as much as we expand and as much as we cover, we cannot afford to build a seven million dollar fire station. Uh, and, and this is really our, our primary response area for North County. Uh, this is where the largest call volume is, the largest population density, and it allows us to respond adequately with advanced life support services and with fire suppression services to the constituents in which you serve. Uh, we believe that your burden with the building, uh, should be mitigated, uh, by our participation in it. However, uh, in, in, in not wanting to violate any, uh, give any way of public funds or resources, I'm sure that our councillor can get together with your councillor and figure out some sort of legal means of doing this, but what we would like to do, and we've kicked it around in the past, uh, not officially, but kind of unofficially, just kind of talking back and forth so that we can both get some trajectory on the future of that building, is that now that it has a roof on it and it's been shored up, it might last for another ten or fifteen years. Uh, we would like to propose to you through the Board of Fire Commissioners and through, uh, management of the Fire Department, that we would like to eventually take possession of that building and alleviate you of your responsibility of that building. Now, you've just put a roof on it and it's not leaking on our crews anymore and we're not having to evacuate the building. However, it does have some other structural issues and it does have some serious, serious electrical issues that have to be addressed in the tens of thousands of dollars. We think that we would like to have you hand us that torch and we would move forward on it to keep that building sustainable for the next decade or two to come until we have the resources to build another fire station. And of course, we would ideally want to build the, the fire station centrally here in the Ione, greater Ione area because that's where we, we have the best capabilities of getting our resources to the maximum constituency. So we would like, if you could, and we would pay the cost, if we could divide that property that you have now, because you have your, you have your service, you have your shop there and we have the fire station there, we would be willing to pay for the surveyor to come out and pay for all legal costs. And this is just throwing it out there because this is just the beginning of the conversation. And we know that it has to be, uh, it cannot be a unilateral decision, it has to be a consensus. Uh, I love the democracies going on in the room. Uh, but we would like for you to figure out a way that where we could take possession of that vehicle, or vehicle, it is a vehicle, by the way, uh, take possession of that building and take responsibility for it in its nurture and upkeep and preservation and absolve the town of any more insurance claims. Because I can promise you that, uh, moving into the future, and I could walk each and every one of you through the building and point it out, it's, it's readily apparent that there's going to be more claims, uh, with respect to that building moving into the future. So this is just the beginning of these discussions and I wanted to propose this to the Town Council itself so it begin, you know, to get some sort of, uh, a feeling about it moving forward. Uh, we would be willing to do that. Of course, we are, like you, we are poor and we are rural and we are broke. Uh, so I would hope that you would be, uh, generous in, uh, us taking, uh, possession of that at some point in the future, if, if you would graciously allow us to do that, uh, so that we continue to serve out of that building. Um, but I, you guys, I'm sure that if you review your financial, financials that, uh, your insurance premiums are, if they didn't go up, they're going up exponentially next year and probably cause you to change carriers, like it did us. Uh, so, uh, with all, all the, all the stuff, you know, insurance would go on exponentially. When we started, uh, when we took over the Fire District, our administration took over the Fire District about six and a half years ago, our insurance premiums were about fourteen thousand. We just paid sixty-two thousand this year. So every year they continue to go up. So, uh, just, uh, food for thought, um, if you have any questions about how, uh, it, how, how we, how we feel about it, because I'm pretty much in a consensus with the people that employ me, the, the Board, uh, the Fire Commissioners Board, if you have any questions, I'll, I'll go to answer them. Or if you have any questions, uh, you want to submit to me, I'll, I'll get them back to you. Uh, and I hope that we can work together in the future on this, uh, deal here, so.
Okay. Well, we'll consider your presentation and, and yeah, we'll all watch your talk and figure out.
It's great.
Okay. Um, now, I'm turning it back over to John because we have the lead service line inventory loan. The Washington State has, uh, given us another requirement and I'll let John explain.
Sure. So I think we talked, the council gave approval one or two meetings ago for us to apply for a loan for just under a hundred thousand dollars to do the loan lead, lead line service inventory to find all the lead in the lines. So it looks like we would be approved for that loan. I sent, you know, all the details out in that packet, but it would be a zero percent, you know, interest loan. It's still in underwriting, so we don't have documents to sign. We just wanted to gauge, uh, you know, two things. A, you know, are you interested in, in taking that loan at, at zero percent interest? If you want to vote on that tonight, that will, once the underwriting comes through, then we can move forward immediately without having to wait for another council meeting. Uh, the other question that's related there is, there is, you could entertain the idea of raising water rates to pay for the loan. Um, so also wanted to gauge, do you have any, you know, interest in doing that? And then I can answer, you know, you know, probably you might have some financial questions about how that works out, so I can, can answer that for you as well. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. Got a clear for the first four questions, do you want to take the loan or not? And then if, assuming that you wanted to take a loan, how would we wanna finance that? Do we wanna do it with the money we already have payable or change rate?
Is there a loan we're paying off?
There is. So there's the, if we took this loan, the cost would be approximately ten thousand dollars annually. Um, we have a current outstanding loan, we pay thirty thousand dollars annually for twenty twenty-four would be the last payment. So twenty twenty-four, we would wind up with, you know, the thirty thousand plus the ten thousand and then moving forward, it would actually be twenty thousand dollars positive revenue. And it wouldn't even be all twenty twenty-four, right? Because we, you know, by the time we hit the loan or the rise, it will be a little bit, you know, under that, so, so yeah.
Didn't they do some spot checks along the line to see if there were any concerns?
They haven't done spot checks yet. That would be, you know.
They did, they did in, um, late, I think it was November. But this is a new regulation of the Washington State which require us to do and not, they won't accept just a spot check anymore. We have to test all of the lines.
So it's required.
It's required.
And at this point.
And if we don't get the loan, we have to figure out where to get the money from.
God, it's a zero percent loan.
Zero percent, it's ten percent. So, and you know, just, you know, some more math that works out, you know, there's a little bit over two hundred thousand dollars in the capital improvement fund for, you know, water. So I think we could just simply pay for it without taking the loan. Right now, that money's sitting in our money market account earning us a little bit under eight hundred dollars annually. So, you know, if we chose to pay rather than taking the loan, you know, we have, you know, we'd be losing, losing that interest, you know, earnings and given that the loan is at zero percent interest, it's, you know, probably revenue positive, we could loan for out revenue, but it's better. It also keeps our reserve side base, there's, you know, catastrophe or something.
Yeah, I'll show this receipt, this packet there.
Well, given that we don't have the loan, is that correct? We don't have all the paperwork ready and drafted, is that?
Yeah, it's, it's in underwriting, so it is.
Okay, so when that comes into underwriting, can we review it and just table it and tell? We can all take a good look at those numbers and I, I would hate to make a bone on something if we don't have all the information.
What would be in the information with the underwriting? What's the total of the loan?
Definitely. Uh, ninety-eight thousand and change.
And with that, that amount of money, they're gonna inspect all the lines.
System, so it directs it all the way to the faucet.
The lines along the town.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, all the way into residences.
Into residences.
Yeah, that's, this packet explains.
So any lead that is in any way connected to the, you know, water system, so it doesn't matter who owns it.
Does that imply that chip a lot?
Yes.
I, okay, so yeah. It's a statewide, well, it's actually a federal and statewide regulation.
With the way everything's going up, that just seems like a really low number to check all the pipes in town. I'd be concerned it wouldn't be enough.
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to defer to the engineers, you know, on that, that's what they're into that. Um, like I said, I, I don't know great detail about how they do it, but there's lots of different methods they use to, to get in and determine that. They don't have to dig up like every single line.
It would seem like a zero percent interest loan for, did you say eighty thousand?
Ninety-eight thousand and change, ten-year term.
Which we could cover if we wanted to with money that's our, that is currently drawing interest.
Correct.
We're assuming a zero percent loan would make sense.
Maybe ten years.
Unless it's just on a timeline.
Yeah, we don't have a strict timeline on it, but it's more obvious that you'd like to, you know, move forward. You know, they, they could start doing it.
So do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, we need a motion.
I gotta make a motion that we, we take that one. I'll second that.
Everybody agree?
Aye. Aye, both.
So all agree? Pecorelli, both?
That's great. Okay. And is, oh, past eight o'clock? And that was the last thing? Okay, um, anybody on council have anything to bring? It would be really quick.
Yeah, I do. Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Um, so with the, um, the CLAF status for the athletic facilities, it's not like grant, it's fund, uh, looking at doing that, we're talking about trying to do something with downtown park, uh, going through what we already have. Uh, we have a great, um, uh, town of Ione Parks Master Plan, uh, for the town, uh, park. Um, I also for the, uh, sports park as well, but in my understanding with this, um, it is site-specific, so if we wanna do it, it needs to be one site and not two. This is gonna be a great template for, uh, setting up to do that, uh, which I've kind of covered since we have a lack of time here and I'm not gonna go through all of it. Ultimately, what I would like to do is try and get a committee together of, uh, people on council and then also local, uh, members in the community who want to be involved with this. Uh, we have a month, um, and a week to do the pre-application. Uh, it's not very difficult, not a lot there, very, uh, very open, um, to discussion. There are, uh, grant, um, uh, assistance that can advise on which direction maybe we should go. Also, we need to address, uh, the quotes that we received, uh, since this was twenty years ago. Um, but it looks like there's some recent activity with it as well. I would like to, uh, put forward a motion that we set up a special meeting, um, very, very soon, um, maybe here, um, at Town Hall for a community meeting, uh, with Town Council to try and come up together with a committee of who's going to do this. So it could be, um, people that are on Town Council, members of the, uh, staff, but also community members can also sign up for help.
For the Town Hall.
Yeah, yeah, and do something like that. So I'd like to put forward a motion that, that meeting, uh, within the next week.
I'll second it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Yeah. And maybe we can come up, uh, maybe, uh, scheduling, kind of decide when would be the way to do that and post that.
Okay, so everybody in favor with getting this, uh, meeting together within the next week with, and Richard, um, you mentioned a day that would work best for you? Was, was that Saturday or?
A Saturday would work, honestly, any day would work. I mean, it, it's a matter of time, we can do this soon, so I would defer to any time.
Cause we'll have to get it posted and everything.
Yeah, yeah.
So we need to know tonight.
I, I could do it any time. If we wanna choose a time right now, until we're fine with that, yeah. Um, it might be best maybe on Saturday when at short notice, maybe more community members might be available and close to trying to do a training with me.
Okay. Because, you know, a lot of people in the community work, so Saturday would probably be great.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so do we wanna say maybe Saturday at ten? Have a meeting here? We can do that. We're talking about this Saturday or next? This Saturday.
This Saturday, yeah. So Saturday at ten in the morning?
Sure, yeah.
For a community meeting to decide on the athletics?
Facilities, yeah, yeah.
Madam Mayor, we could put that out for two weeks, that way we can get some sort of advertisement with a seven percent or another, uh, paper, so.
We, we have, we have a month. We have a month. This is, we, we have twenty-four hours of emergency notice, we didn't, we haven't announced it here. It's going out to everybody through this over time.
Yeah. This is a public conference.
I've seen it over another week after that.
So we have a motion that we have a meeting on Saturday at ten. Has Shipley made the motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Little seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Yep. Okay, so Saturday and you girls, you heard that, didn't you? You're gonna be here?
I'm at ten. I'm tied up. We're gonna have a little bit of a delay.
Oh, okay.
Well, if that doesn't work, we can, we can pick a different day, so.
Or an evening.
Or an evening, yeah, I'm totally fine with that.
Oh, I don't want, you know.
Well, we need as many people to show up as possible, so, cause there's, needs to be a committee for.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Kathy and Cindy will be here.
Okay, so ten o'clock, Saturday. Okay, and everybody's in favor, okay, it's ten. And, um, so how much time did you guys want for the shoreline management plan? You said you wanted to have a town hall meeting?
Yes. I'd make it about two hours of the week. With all the questions.
So when, when do you propose to have that? Let's see.
When is the one that's up in Medley Falls and could you join that one?
Because you did ask that question.
Yes, there's one up in Medley Falls and can you join that one?
The shoreline, they're having a town hall meeting at Medley Falls for the shoreline?
Yeah, they're having a special meeting for that, actually, I think.
Didn't he say he wasn't gonna attend?
Uh, sure.
Not in person. No, he said not in person.
It's a, it's a public hearing, I believe they're taking public comment. I don't think that that will be considered a town hall or a workshop. I don't think they anticipated having a question and answer session.
Okay.
I was always at the meeting where they decided they would like to take public comment. So I think it would be a mistake to, for people to show up there thinking their answers, they were gonna get answers because they're not prepared for that.
Okay.
I figure a couple of weeks to get the questions on paper to me. I'm looking at a calendar now. Depends on what? Council meeting on the twenty-first. Depends on if the citizens have time off from work or whatever. If we do it in the evening, I'm thinking the twenty-second, twenty-first, that week.
What, what days of the week are those?